So I'll call the meeting to order and if you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So this is our first in-person since the governor lifted the executive order and we're here at Central Office.
Greg, you're muted.
Okay. And today is Monday, June 21st, and the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I'd like to make one change.
Okay.
And that's on the executive session. The executive session should be spelled out with the reasons for, whether it's personnel, legal, property, or whatever it should be. And in the statute, it says that technically, we're only supposed to talk about that one issue. So if it's going to be a multiple, it needs to be listed as multiple.
Right.
So just for future.
And just for notation, this evening, executive session, I think, will be just for negotiations.
Correct. With that change, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's Kristin Whitman.
Okay.
Do we have a quorum online?
Are we recording this, anybody? This being recorded?
PEG TV is recording. They're here with us.
PEG TV is here, yeah.
But will those of us not there?
I'm not recording the meet. Should I have? Ben?
Record from this point on.
Well, I don't know if you'll be able to capture everybody who's not present in the room but still in the meeting, so that's, I'm just not sure how that'll work. So probably yes is what my guess.
It has started.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Lisa, there's one other thing. We have two leave requests that should be under Personnel, so beneath Resignations, we should just put Leave Requests. Those are last minute.
Okay.
Those should be in your packet as well.
Yes, those are in our packet. All right. Is there any member of the general public present that would like to speak at this time to an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move.
No, I think someone's raising their hand.
Okay. Whoever they are, I think, are muted. It's really difficult to see them.
Hi, sorry, I was not muted. I'm Katie Lazarus. I'm writing for the Branson Recorder, and I just wanted to say hello and thank you for having me. And if there's somebody in particular that I might be able to just chat with at the end of the meeting, that would be great. Is that a possibility?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, depends on who you want to, I mean.
We'll be going into executive session at the end of the meeting, so you'll have to leave and then we'll have to give you a time to come back then.
Okay, or if there's an email for somebody that I could have?
Yeah, you can email christopher/sell, S-E-L-L, at grcsu.org.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to all business. Transcript update.
Okay, in your packets, I guess I'm introducing this, or Lisa, you're introducing it?
Yeah, that's fine, Greg. I can start off and hand it over to you for the second part. So in your, you should have received an email from Christine McGinnis this afternoon with a hot-off-the-press update for the transcript. I'm going to, I'm going to try and screen share and see if it is worth doing in this format or not, but for those of you who are there, if you wanted to look along in your packet or materials, you could do that as well. So we just wanted to go through some of the final updates and changes that occurred. The first page in that email was just, again, the original transcript, so you have it for comparison purposes and can see all of the changes that have been made. And then we move on to the sample transcript, which has been updated. Some of the highlights from last time, so I'm not going to go over everything, but just the differences from last time to this time. We tried to have it be better organized and more visually formatted to be appealing and to make sure that there weren't any blank spaces or gaps that might be misinterpreted by people looking at it as if something wasn't there. So one of the quick little edits we made, on both sides of the header, at the top of the page, we adjusted the font and the, not, sorry, not the font, the formatting of the lines so that they're equivalent and they look more balanced on both sides of the header. In the top right section of the transcript, we swapped the order of GPA and class size so that class size and rank would be next to each other, as that's information that counselors, admissions officers are usually looking for together. We removed that box around the items at the bottom completely so that it would not look as though there was anything missing or any sections that weren't filled in. We also changed the order of those boxes so that the habits of work box were not quite ready to populate would be on the bottom, and again, visually would not look like something was not present on the transcript or was missing. So those are some of the big kind of visual changes that you'll see that we think really improves the overall flow and visual presentation of the transcript. We also, of course, have been working really hard with the developers on running lots and lots of samples and lots of lots of little programming edits to make sure that everything is accurate and running clearly and all the fields are presenting the way that they should. And again, I just can't thank our guidance counselors enough for all the work that they've done on looking at this over and over and over again and making sure that it really represents our students well. We also had a lot of lengthy conversation about the comments from the board at the last meeting about how to capture and share information about awards and extracurricular activities that students do and in looking at other transcripts and looking at what has traditionally been submitted. Applying for secondary school or college in particular are submitting such as resumes and the Common Application. We really feel that that information is well represented in other places, that students and families have a lot of control over how they present the student and the way that certain activities are included. That gives you a really much better whole-child picture. So Greg was going to walk us through some pieces of the Common App to show exactly where you can find that. And I'm going to stop recording, Greg, so that you haven't ever stopped presenting so that you can pop yours up as well.
I'm actually presenting the screen to the whole room, so, yeah, could you just throw that up?
Yeah, I'll put up the Activities tab for you.
So in the paper in your packet, you'll see, under Activities, Community Service, Foreign Languages, anything music-related, Government, Politics, Paid Work outside of school. That's, you know, not to, you know, use a point of phrase, but it's common to put these kind of things in the Common App and, you know, fill your resume out with it, but it's not really for formalized transcript. On the second page, you could see any of like the education-related secondary school information, but like really anything having to do with extracurricular activities, like student spirit-related, any groups or everything, they usually go in the Common App and they're, you know, submitted separately. And I think, Tracy, I don't know, to surprise you, I see your cameras off. Yeah, as a former admissions counselor, can you just speak on how you generally get information and in what forms? Is this, is this common to see it in another thing other than the transcript?
A student-written resume or the Common Application, a college application, if for some reason a student, some students will do the application on the website for the individual colleges. They've been doing a lot of fee-waving if you apply on their actual website. They have questions for all of these things. I don't recall seeing transcripts that have these extensive things on it. That's typically a student resume.
Yep.
So I think one of the things we were talking about at the last meeting were we were concerned about how was going to be represented and what was going to be represented under flexible pathways, and the primary concern was not so much for college-based students, but more for our work students that were going into the workforce. Just as she said about admissions and how applications have changed, so have just general applications, and the conversation, as I recall it, was, you know, giving our students that best foot forward when they're going out into the workforce. So if I'm, if I have a student in school that's doing an internship, I have an expectation that that's going to be included under the flexible pathways. That's the way I understand flexible pathways. I don't think that that needs to be on the Common App or something else. I think that's something that we're doing. Otherwise, flexible pathways becomes a very small cup, I guess, of what you're putting on there. So I think things like that, particularly internships, should be included under flexible pathways.
Yeah, and if you see the sample that's up there, you can see that there's an internship and a Governor's Institute opportunity highlighted as samples of flexible pathways. Exactly what you're saying.
It would be like that, that would be where the bullet point list would be, and then if you wanted, like, how often did you do it? Like, you know, what can you tell me about that? That would be more for like the resume and for, you know, something that provides a lot more information about what that physical therapy internship is all about and like who to contact and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, but I think at the last meeting, the conversation was, what is it going to look like under flexible pathways? And the example given was pretty limited, and so that was one thing that we were looking for. So the other piece, when I look at this tonight, I think the font is incredibly small on this.
Yeah, we can fit it in. Why not make it bigger?
And the second question, I guess I would have is, how is it going to look on there for a college course? How is that, is that going to just be slid under junior year CCV history course? I know how.
Typically, those are listed with the name of the college and the name of the course and the course grade and the course credit.
Okay. So I think since the expectation was this was coming back in July and we have board members gone, we should put this on the agenda for July. It came late in the afternoon also for members to be able to look at and put it as an action item for the July meeting. Do board members have questions, comments about the proposal this evening? And I'm sorry, I can't see you on the screen.
I don't think anybody's raising their hand.
Okay. Does anyone have?
This is Kristin Ross. I'll just quickly say that I think it looks, you know, improved since the last time, and I agree, the font's a little bit small, but I think that's just how transcripts are. Mine was down on a typewriter, I'm sure, in the day, so from, you know. And I like that the spacing is a little more filled out, so there's not as much, you know, white space. I think that looks a lot better, so. But yeah, I didn't get a chance with running around today to, like, look through it in detail, so I would be fine with tabling it for just another, until the next meeting, you know, as a quick agenda item.
Okay, so we'll place it as a July agenda item for action then.
Could we see it in a larger font?
Sure. Is that possible, Lisa?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Could we see it in a larger font? That would also fill out the page a little bit better.
Then I'll have to ask Mel to get in touch with the developers around that. I know that we had asked them to try to keep it to one page.
Okay.
It was very important to us because we know that that's a priority for admissions counselors, so I'm not certain what the options are with that, but I can follow up with Mel and see what we can do.
Okay.
I don't think you can change the font or the size of the font. I think that would have to be a separate change.
Wow.
If you wanted to change the size of the font, I think it's not something in the printing options you have to, we'd have to tell the developer, increase it by this much amount. They shouldn't charge us for that, but I'm just saying, that's a modification if you want it there.
Okay, because it seems like the last time, the font was different than it is today, so.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at, but I'm just telling you that the printing out of the transcript, the font is locked.
Okay, so let's.
I can look into it, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, let's ask them for the amount of money that we've spent. I think we should have a little bit of leeway.
Yeah, like I said, it will be a change, but I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, so that would be great if we could see it next time. And we don't have to see all three. You could just provide us one in, you know, a larger-sized font.
Okay.
Thank you. Quarry Valley, 7 through 12, Handbooks.
Thanks, Lisa. This is a bit of an update. So I think it was probably back in December or January where we initially started discussing the handbooks, and we had looked at a July target date to present the handbooks to the board. What we are looking at is pushing that back to August 1st, when working with, you know, with the principals and the, you know, at three buildings, Polley, West Rattlin, and Proctor, on aligning our handbook, so we kind of have a common Quarry Valley, 7 through 12 handbook. Obviously, there'll be some differences because of, you know, building makeup and, you know, logistics, but as we're starting to kind of align schedules and look at, start to share courses, things along those lines, you know, I think it makes sense for us to really, to align our policies and our procedures in a lot of these areas. So we'll be working, I know we're meeting again on July 12th, what the building admins kind of go through. Last step, we've also asked Kristin McGinnis, who's working right now, who's my, our admin assistant, working on the, taking a look at the three handbooks we currently have in place, looking for commonalities and some differences, so, you know, we'll have everything ready to go. But on August 1st, we will be sending that out to the boards for review, and then we can have a discussion at the August Board Meeting if there are any concerns brought up at that time. But, you know, obviously, there'll be some things that's, we won't be able to align everything, but it is our goal to eventually have, like I said, a Quarry Valley, 7 through 12 handbook that is kind of shared across the three buildings.
That sounds good. Any questions for Chris? All right, moving on. Quarry Valley Retreat. This is something we've talked about, and Chris has reached out.
Yes, I know that in our last Board meeting, we discussed the possibility of having a Board Meeting/Retreat, and looking at Dave Walk, who has agreed to help us out in facilitating this retreat, that date does not work for him. I also reached out to the VSBA to do some calibration work, not just with Quarry Valley, but with some of our other boards as well, and Susan Holson, who's the Director of Education Services, you know, gave me a list of dates available. Unfortunately, for both Dave and Susan, our Quarry Valley Board Meeting date does not work. So we're looking at the potential or possibility of having, it's kind of split up over the course of two afternoons for two two-hour sessions on August 2nd and August 3rd, where Susan Holson would, you know, kind of do a, you know, board member responsibilities, kind of review characteristics of effective boards, other sort of calibrating things the first day, and then Dave Walk would come in the second day, facilitate goal-setting, you know, things along those lines. So that would be my recommendation. I've already checked the calendar. There are no conflicts with those two dates. Times are flexible. Both Dave and Susan are available day and night, but they both recommend instead of doing one long four-hour session, which can be exhausting to break that up into two two-hour sessions. So, and we know it's difficult during the summer because people have vacations, but we're working on a lot of different committees and board, and these are really the only dates we could agree upon, so.
Thoughts? Comments on the dates? Time?
I somehow missed the date. Sorry, this is Kristin Whitman. What, is it in the packet?
Not in the packet. This is, I finalized some of these times today. I spoke with Susan today. So it'd be August 2nd and August 3rd. The times are flexible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So what's?
This is Kristin Ross. I probably won't be in town, but I, I don't know if we can make a remote option. Also, one of those dates is my birthday, so I have to decide if I want to spend it doing that. No offense to everyone, I'd love to see you, but that's not exactly how I was going to spend my birthday. So, yeah, I don't know if we can talk about remote options later, but if that works for everybody, then I think, go for it, so.
And what kind of time would people be comfortable with? Would the preference be like 10 till noon, 1 to 3?
If the board.
I could do a remote option as well. I won't be in town, but I guess the time I could make it work, whichever.
Okay.
They're not opposed to, if the board would like to do one day for four hours, they'll work with that. I mean, they just suggested if we could spread it across two days. I know that is asking a lot during the summer, you know, give up two afternoons or two evenings, but, so.
Would the preference be one day?
I prefer morning or evening, not the afternoon.
Okay. For one day or?
Well, if it's, if it's going to be four hours, then it's probably going to go into the afternoon, but if it's going to be split, I'd rather do it in the morning or in the evening, personally, but.
Or you could do 9 to 1. I mean, that's a hiccup into the afternoon, but. Preference by anyone, or it's just going to be my choice?
I think Friday, 9 to 1, I guess, would be the best of the options.
Friday, 9 to 1?
It's Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's Monday, Tuesday. I believe, the second.
Yeah, it's a Monday or a Tuesday, Kristin, so August 2nd is Monday, August 3rd is Tuesday.
On Friday, you can do what you want.
Have your birthday pretty.
So Kristin, which day is your birthday?
August 3rd, the Tuesday. So my preference is Monday, but, and put it all in one day, that's a little bit easier for me to get away one day rather than two, but again, I do get that four hours is long, but when I do retreats, they're all day, so four hours seems tame to me, but I know that other people have day jobs and stuff like that, that they don't necessarily want to take off work, so if two hours is easier to get out, then, you know, or maybe I can go on the Monday and miss the Tuesday and I just.
Well, what if we try?
You'll tell me how much fun you had.
What if we try Monday, 9 to 1, and just bang it out in one day there? So Monday, 9 to 1. And who knows, we might finish early. I mean, it's not necessarily that you're going to be there till 1.
Yeah, and Nate and Seth aren't here either, so we'll have to see what they're.
Well, we can, yeah, we'll email them, but we need to be able to book these people, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a little late already, so yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday will work. Sorry, I was in the wrong month. I rejoined. I'm with you now.
Thanks for joining us. All right, so let's say Monday, the 2nd, 9 to 1. And maybe, I mean, you may not want to come till 10 or something, something that, you know, if Susan's doing it in the morning, it may be repetitive or something, so. All right, sounds good. New business. Polley Elementary Notification of Presumptive Isolation Zone. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is something that Louis brought to my attention a couple weeks ago, and felt that, obviously, considering the discussion with the trails that we had at Polley Elementary, that we should also just bring this to the board's attention as well. And if you look through this, it's basically there's a, an adjacent landowner who is looking to build on the property, kind of butts up against the outfield fence, you know, at Polley Elementary School, and as they're building, I do believe, a septic and a well system, there are just these presumptive isolation zones in terms of where, you know, I guess they call it the overshadow, kind of just overlaps a little bit onto our property, which basically means that we can't build or develop on that overshadow area without impacting the, I guess, their, you know, their well or their septic. And so we just have to, you know, give our approval or a blessing in order to proceed, but, so. And like I said, the blueprint kind of shows you the outline, and I know that, I don't think, I don't know if Kristin Calgary's on, I can't see, but this really is that, it's, like I said, the corner of the property back by the outfield fence, so.
Yes, I am on, and Louis and I, actually, it went to Louis first, and we talked about it, and it really doesn't take away anything from the field or the space.
Good.
All right. Any questions from anyone? I guess the question, has the permit even been submitted? This is the oddest permit I've ever seen. There's no date on it.
They may be just trying to get things ready for the permits when it comes up their way.
Well, it says that seven days.
Is there a DRB meeting for it?
There's nothing listed on here. So, I don't know. It's not something we have in our town because we have municipal, so it's something unique. I guess the question would be in Polley, what happens if they have some kind, because it is wastewater, so it's sewer, some kind of issue or impact?
It'll be liable.
Yeah, how does the, because it doesn't talk about that in here.
It wouldn't, because the property owner, two separate properties, so if it impacts our property, we would have recourse against their reimbursing for whatever the issue is. They're not encroaching, the way I read it was, is they're not putting the system on our property.
No.
They just need a barrier or a buffer between that, and that's what they're talking about.
Right.
It's just a buffer.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be any different than if your neighbor did something and you had an overflow and it came onto your property, so it would be treated the same, so there shouldn't be any impact other than whatever the issue was, the insurance company to the insurance company.
All right. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Is there an action item here that we need to do, or is this just FYI?
Yeah, you need to.
I'm going to submit a permit. They might not even get the permit. I don't know.
Louis had said we just needed the approval for him to kind of sign off on this. I don't know where he signs off, but when I.
There's no signing off on this. You're just, we're giving approval, and then he's going to go apply for a permit.
Yep.
So the hope is that whatever he applies for is exactly what he represented here. So we do need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. This is Kristin Ross. I will move to approve the proposed notification of presumptive isolation zone that will butt up against the PES Polley Elementary School property there, but it has shown in the paperwork we received for this meeting.
Okay. And seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of minutes. There was a notation in the minutes on page four. That's a note from the Recording Secretary about a motion. That's a note from the recording secretary about a motion. And actually, the notation is incorrect. So I don't know if people actually read the minutes, but.
Everybody didn't see it.
It says, "Note from the recording secretary. Lisa stated that the votes were four yes and three no, and the motion passed by majority. However, the votes were tied at four yes and four no. Vote tally: in favor Seth, Jessica, Mike, Nate; against Lisa, Kristen Ross, Kristen Whitman, and Tom. I did not vote against allowing students to leave the state." So the, the motion did pass. We didn't have any student, any classes leave the state. But just as a pointed clarification.
Yeah, so, so she can just edit that part out, because I went back and looked at my handwritten notes, and I didn't find that either, obviously, so I was kind of confused by her note there.
Yeah, and I, and I spoke pretty aggressively.
Unless that note went to a different motion, but I didn't, anyway, I didn't see that anywhere in my notes, so.
All right, so if the motion to approve could include the.
Just a clarification.
Sure.
Poltoni High School will go to Lake George for the day.
Oh.
They did go out of state, but they, it was just down to Lake George.
Oh, okay. So I didn't realize. All right, well, it wasn't like when we were talking, they were going six hours away or something, so. All right, so if the motion could just include the removal of that from page four, and that the motion stands, that it passed by majority. Would someone like to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike, second. Seconded by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of warrants, the warrant should receive via your email. Question should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
Kristen Ross, I approve, I move to approve the warrants.
Second.
Kristen Whitman, I second that.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Liz. I have a few things, just to kind of go through. First, I just would like to, it's kind of with a sigh of relief that we have made it through the school year. It was a very long year, to say the least. It's a challenging year, there are a lot of positives, but I would personally like to thank, you know, our board members, our administrators, our, our staff, families, you know, students, you know, everyone involved in making this, you know, a, the best year possible. I know that, I said earlier, you know, to people I was talking with, that back in September, people are saying that there's nowhere to make it through this year, this just isn't, you know, it's not sustainable, and, you know, it just, it's never going to work, and it really was, you know, a day-to-day plan, but I said, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, having faith in our staff and our, our teachers, administrators, and doing the right things, and it just was, you know, a, a great year. It's, it's, you know, I'm very fortunate, I'm very happy, it's, it's over, to be honest, because you can relax a little bit, but now we're starting to think about next year. While we're thinking about next year, just quickly talk about the education recovery plan. We did, late last week, receive note that our recovery plan was approved. There are a couple things that Lisa and I have to look through, and kind of go through the notes, whatever else, but we will have, and I think Lisa might, could talk about this at Wednesday night, but we will have a more detailed update with the recovery plan, as well as what's in at our next GRCSU board meeting. Is that correct, Lisa? Just to you. Yes, okay, thank you. Also, just want to talk about next year real quick. So it is in our packets, so you've all seen this. I know there have been a lot of questions about what next fall is going to look like, and I've been saying this all year long, but as of today, as of June 21st, the plan will be for us to return to in-person learning next fall. We will not be having a, a remote option. While it worked well for us this year, that was, it was never our intent nor our plan to continue with the remote option moving forward, unless there is another state of emergency or some, some other issue that would maybe force our end, but right now, our plan is to return back to in-person learning in all of our schools. I know, understand that some families may feel a certain way, but maybe feel, you know, schools aren't safe. There are other options for those families. Obviously, we'll assist with home school, or, you know, just looking at, you know, VT, VLC, or something along those lines, but our schools are back in person. We are going to, you know, work with, you know, our instructional coaches, the admins, and our staff, looking at the, the things that we learned this year, in terms of, you know, from quality instruction, in terms of, you know, technology, how we can best parlay that into, you know, moving forward, that, you know, we learned a lot this year, and so we want to make sure that as we move into next year, that it's not necessarily returning back to where we were, you know, pre-pandemic, it's looking at, it's how we can just, you know, continue, continue forward with quality instruction and learning in our classrooms. This summer, I've heard, I'm sure Senator Sanders talked a lot about this, about the enrichment and academic offerings in our schools. There's been a big push from a variety of levels, but our, you know, in our last year CSU board meeting, we went through, and we kind of broke down across the SU, a lot of the great offerings that our schools are, you know, will be having. The same will be in our Corey Valley schools, and some of those started to kind of ramp up this past week. But for more information, obviously, you can check, you know, with your building administrators, and we are working on having that information on our school's website. So I know I talked to Greg about this the other day, we're working on making sure that all that information in terms of what academic offerings, what enrichment offerings will be available, will be on the websites, you know, but if anyone's interested, obviously, they can call their, you know, school's admin assistant or the principal's directly for more information. School meals, I've been saying this, you know, for probably five, six months now, but it will be available during the summer. There will be no delivery options, so if families are interested in school meals, they can come and, reach out to the building principals for pickup. It will be provided to all families, so all they do, just let their building principals know, just at a time, that they would like to just, you know, pick up some school meals, meals during the summer. I do have some congratulations, you know, there are a couple things here. First, I want to congratulate the Proctor Junior/Senior High School girls softball team on a great season. They fell just short in the state championship, but I'd like to congratulate them on a great season, you know, a good run. Obviously, it wasn't what they wanted, but still, I think, looking back on it, they'll, they'll look back and, you know, realize, you know, it was a pretty good season, you know, considering circumstances. Also, in the Division IV State Track Meet, you know, I know that Jay might have this as well in his principal report, but there are a number of athletes from West Rutland who participated and did a great job, and I'm going to quickly just kind of list them. I know Jay says, again, it's, that's okay, because I think it's great to give these kids the recognition, but in the men's varsity 100 meters, McAllister Perry finished first place. The women's varsity 100 meters, Isabel Lanfair finished in second. The men's varsity 200 meters, McAllister Perry, once again, finished first place. Women's varsity shot put, Isabel Lanfair, first place. Women's varsity javelin, Isabel Lanfair, second place. The men's varsity 110 meter hurdles, McAllister Perry, first place. Men's varsity 300 meter hurdles, McAllister Perry, first place. Men's varsity javelin, Tyler Serani, third place. Men's varsity long jump, Tyler Serani, first place. And men's varsity triple jump, Tyler Serani, first place. So I just want to congratulate, you know, the West Rutland, you know, student athletes, fantastic, you know, track season, great job. Lastly, I just want to congratulate the Corey Valley class of 2021, all of our graduates in our Proctor, West Rutland, and Poltoni. I just want to congratulate you and wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? I know we don't have all the principals with us tonight, so it'll be a short report. We have Kristen, Joe, and Jay. So we'll start with Kristen, you're on top.
Hi, everybody. You do have my written report, and I would ask that you check out the links to the field days and the sixth grade lip sync competition, as well as the sixth grade graduation. I think that it was, those were some of the ways that we kind of were able to end the year in a normal way, and the kids had a lot of fun, so if you have a chance to check those out, if you haven't, I think you're, you will enjoy them. Also, there's a link in there to Mr. Harrington's fourth and fifth grade class. They participated in a bridge-up program this year. They had virtual lessons once a week with a professional artist, and they learned the language and vocabulary of the Midsummer Night's Dream, and their recordings will be put with others, other schools in the state of Vermont, and there will be a statewide presentation, and I'll forward that information to you when I have, when I have received Definitely wrapped up last year, or this past year, very quickly. We had a lot of things going on last week. We started our in-service for our seven mindsets, new social-emotional learning curriculum, and that will be a part of our summer program as well. Summer school is planned, emergency information's all in a binder, they're ready to roll when they start on July 6th. And Tammy and I, we have started working on our handbooks and the budget for next year. And I just wanted to bring your attention to the enrollment, because we are starting with some, we'll be starting with some large class sizes in the upper grades. That's it.
Yeah, it's, it's always interesting how the numbers change, though, the closer you get to the actual school day, so I think we'll just try to keep an eye on the numbers as we move towards September. Window replacements, how many windows is that, that's being, that are being replaced? The entire school, or just a, a portion of the school?
No, Rich is just doing them, what do I want to say, in stages.
Okay.
So he's not, and it's not, there are no, I'm sorry, on my, on the bottom of my report, there are no major maintenance projects planned for Poltoni Elementary School, with the exception of the resurfacing of the tennis courts, and that's $4,600.
Okay. Do you question, any other questions for Kristen?
Kristen, I put it in the chat, but I don't know if you saw it, but thank you for the links. That's really nice to be able to kind of click on that and get a real feel for the end of the school year.
You're welcome. Hope they work.
All right, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. You have the written report. We did have graduation on June 11th. It went pretty well. We got out on the football field, the weathermen, got to love them, they can be wrong, and everyone still loves them, but the rain came about an hour early than it was supposed to, but I'll be honest with you, everyone I talked to afterwards, all the senior parents came up to me, and everyone kind of milled around for like a half hour after graduation, and they're all like, perfect ending to the year, you know, having the rain come, and it just seemed to, you know, it didn't dampen anybody's spirits, no pun intended. I, I just, I can't say enough for the community. We just had a lot of help with graduation, with, between the parade, we had the fire department, the sheriff's department, our local constable, you know, people helping out up at graduation, and I'm going to be getting something out to the papers here soon as a thank you forum, but, you know, it really was a community graduation. We weren't, we didn't have the, the community members come up and do the presentations for the scholarships, just because we made that call about a month and a half ago when we weren't sure what was going on, but it kind of worked out well, too, because that would have added a half hour to the rain, but, but, you know, I just want to, you know, thank everybody for that, and, you know, I also, a special shout out to our senior class advisors, Robin Halt and Rachel Lynch. Like I told people, I said, you know, usually we start planning for prom the latest January, sometimes, you know, in November, and they pulled it together in four weeks, they pulled together a senior trip in four weeks, too, trying to, they tried to get the Vermont stuff, and it was just as easy. They ended up having, they got one date, they could, went out at the fun spot down in Lake George, so they grabbed that while they could, but, you know, they, they just, amazing work that, you know, that they were able to pull that stuff off in the last four weeks of school. And a shout out, too, to the staff, and especially to Rich and Dr. Chicorelli and our custodial staff. I mean, you know, looking back, we were reflecting at the end of the year, you know, with our COVID stuff, and, you know, we were really, the cases that we had came during a break, and the cases were family members of students that were, you know, had to quarantine because of issues where they worked or went to school, and when they went to get the seven-day test to go back, they tested positive, and that's how we got our tested thing. So, you know, just, you know, talking with Dr. Chick and, and Rich, and just, you know, how we, and our, our staff, keeping, you know, everyone's social distance, and just, we thought we were really lucky in how we did it, so, you know, a great shout out to everybody as well, with a tough year. That just made things a lot easier, where we weren't constantly, you know, Lisa and Chris, no offense, but, you know, I'd rather spend my Valentine's Day at home with my wife instead of with you guys in my office, making phone calls to a bunch of parents and doing all that stuff, but, but, you know, and I, I can't say enough, too, with the, when we did have a case, the, the nurses from the other schools, and even out of district, just the, you know, not even the Corey Valley nurses, but everyone just jumped on board and helped out, and it was all hands on decks. It made it a lot easier. So just, you know, reflecting on the end of the year, that's, you know, a lot of things that went well, and, you know, that's, we got it, so, just appreciate everything with that.
All right. Any questions for Joe?
No. Just another comment. Sorry, I just want to say, I totally agree with you, Joe, and like, the district did an amazing job keeping our kids safe, and I just don't think we've gotten a chance to really reflect on that, so thank you for reminding us. It's just amazing that our kids were be able to be in school and that we had so few cases, so very appreciative.
Great, thank you. Jay?
Well, good evening, everybody. In my report, I just want to thank all of the community and staff for a great year. The kids were the real champions in the end, they did a great job, had a wonderful graduation. Thank you to everyone who helped make that event happen, it was wonderful. We also, I'd be remiss to not celebrate our two retiring teachers, Kathy Turgeon and Kristy Paluziak, both West Rutland graduates, and then spent 37 and 33 years respectfully as teachers at West Rutland, and also to Elmer Jones, who was our exiting custodian, who was there for 15 years. Lots of good things this, today, when I came into work, Ms. Dous and Mr. McLaughlin were there with the Humanities Camp. This is sponsored by the Vermont Humanities Project, and that's going great. Next week, we're going to start Tapestry and Summer Academy, and that is going on. I did put in one last hiring update, and we had a late resignation. Thank you, Mr. Moser, for sitting in on an interview last week. We're waiting to see if he accepts our, our offer. And I did put down, under Building Matters, and I, we had been asked for an update, and my update did not get placed in, but under Building Matters, we're painting two hallways, three staircases, and three classrooms. We have five permeative boards to install, we have heat pumps going into our library, which is going to be a real asset for that, for the building. We also have installation of two small gazebos, 12 foot by 12 foot. Those were paid for by a grant from a pre-K grant that we went after and received, so kudos, and we're also installing some new playground equipment, including some swings. So there's lots going on at West Rutland to be proud of. I can't emphasize enough with what Mr. Devanna said, the staff, the community, the kids, the nursing staff, across Corey Valley, and Kristen and Lisa's leadership throughout this. This is, I just finished my 30th year in education in Vermont, and this was probably one of the most taxing years that I have ever had, both, or just as an educator and as a parent, so, and, and good job by all.
Questions for Jay? Great, thank you. I'll just do a quick Proctor update, since Kristy isn't here and Jen's taking a little break. We also had a great end of the year, fun and field days down at PYL, pool days up at the pool, thanks to the Oberg's for making that possible. Graduations went well at both the high school and the elementary school, and those also end with the fire truck parade throughout town, which is always fun and exciting. And, you know, as the parent of a senior, it was a trying year, but I have to say that they were a resilient group and have, have great success ahead of them, and it was, it was nice to see them come through it and be able to actually. And it was, it was nice to see them come through it and be able to actually have a graduation, senior banquet, sports banquet, and play all of the sports. So, and we just actually had, the drama department just put on their play Friday and Saturday. So it's nice to have that sense of normalcy coming back. But it's great to see the support from parents, the community, teachers, and the kids. The kids were the, the real heroes, as I'll have said, you know, doing what needed to be done in order to be there and be successful every day. So, you know, it's a good team. And hopefully, we can just look back on this time as a successful time and move forward to, to what we consider normalcy. So, thank you all very much. Moving on to contracts. So we have a list of contract recommendations in front of us. So professional staff, we'll start with that. Anthony Sawyer, Tammy White, Zachariah Eastman, Carl Mum, Mallory Buxton Erickson. Any questions on that list? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations for professional staff.
Kristen Ross, so moved.
Second. Second by Tom. All those in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to support staff. Matthew Lanfair, Jonathan Davis, Michael Mitchell, Zachary Royer, Jacob DeBanas, Tyler Pope, Aiden Morse, Aaron P., and Kevin Macnen. Are there any questions on the support staff recommendations? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations for support staff.
Kristen Whitman, motion to approve.
Kristen Ross, second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Extra curricular is an incredibly long list. You've all had a chance to read over that. Are there any questions about the recommendations for the extracurriculars? Most of them appear to be summer enrichment or summer tutoring. There's a couple, class advisors, basketball coach.
Can you just remind me what Apex is? I guess that's at Ponti High School, because Apex.
That's our, sorry, Kristen, that's our summer program. That's our, it's our online credit recovery program that we do. And we have someone that oversees it. So they're, the kids have someone to reach out to during the summertime as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, a motion would be in order to approve the extracurricular recommendations.
Kristen Whitman, I'll make a motion to approve the extracurricular recommendation.
Second.
Kristen Ross, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I do think it would be interesting to have for August, September, just numbers of the numbers that attended the summer enrichment courses. So if this is something that is to happen again, just so we have an idea of, of what that looks like. Resignations. There are three resignations before you. Zachariah Eastman, Joe Piantac, and Kevin Rantien. A motion would be in order to accept the resignations.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mike, second.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We also have leave requests. Were those at the top? Oh, from Lindsay Ryder and Abby Bennett. So this is something like we did last meeting, I think. These are local employees that are asking for leave to move to coaching positions at the SU. And their letters are in your pocket. Any questions about that, concerns?
I guess my only question would just be about the coaching. If in the future, we'll get some information about like how much time coaches are spending at each of the buildings, if that's something that's in the forecast to come?
I see head shaking and a thumbs up. So yes, I think that could be included in a report. And I agree, we seem to have a lot of coaches. So it would be interesting to, to have an idea of what that looks like across the SU. If there's no-
I, I would, I would, I would concur that it would be nice to know who is what coach, who, what is their specialty, because they're not all doing the same kinds of things. And then I would personally like to know more about the process of how a coach is requested, you know, for whatever reason they're requested by a building manager. So I don't know, Lisa Madison, you don't have to do that today here, but maybe even just in a quick, like bullet point, like this is kind of the process. Because I feel like we keep adding coaches, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, but I'd like to kind of track, like who's going where, how often, what are their specialties? You know, not necessarily down to the minute, but just to get a sense of who those people are. You know, if they're moving around from building to building, it's, it's harder to sort of feel who they are as part of the education community. So it'd be kind of nice to get a little picture of that and maybe just some examples that, that would be conducive for, say, the August meeting or something.
Why do we say Sept-
When the budget request comes, it's easier to get a sense of what that looks like, so.
Why do we say September meeting, since August meeting is going to be handbooks? And anything else we have prior to opening? So September might be better. They might be set and have an idea where they're going to go. And she could give us a, a report of who's in what building, what their expertise is, and how she's recruiting coaches. And what our expectation is for coaches also in buildings.
Sounds great. September would be great.
All right, well, if there are no other questions, a motion would be in order to accept the two leave requests from, one from Lindsay and one for Abby for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Kristen Whitman, I'll make a motion to accept the two leave requests.
Second.
Kristen Ross, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're opposed? Motion passes by majority. Monthly financials, since Louis isn't with us, those are in your pocket for review. If you have questions or concerns about something, feel free to reach out to him via email. I know he checks his email even when he's frolicking at the beach.
Lisa, can I just bring up something for future consideration related to finance? We had talked about, I think, in January and February meeting, to kind of do a line by line work on, you know, budget time. And so I just don't want to let that go if we're still interested in doing that, to think about, you know, when, when, you know, once they already have a budget draft, I feel like it's almost too late to go there. So anyway, not sure what everybody else thinks, but I just didn't, I wanted to put that out there before it kind of goes by the wayside. And I, you know, just to be on the lookout, maybe working with Louis on that. So he has a heads up.
So do you want to put that on the July agenda? Just have a discussion with Louis about what that would look like and a good timeframe to start that?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll put that on as a, as a July agenda item. All right, committee reports, the communication committee.
So Kristen, Kristen Ross has done a great job kind of leading this. So I'm going to actually, Kristen, if you don't mind, kind of just tell us about what we've been doing? Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, so we've met a couple times and, let me get a little closer to my microphone here. So we met a couple times and we have gone through the websites. Shannon and Greg are really reworking websites. The deadline is sort of end of this month to mid-July to get all the websites for all the schools, how Shannon has a vision for them, and then for, to working with some feedback from the building administrators, so that there's uniformity across. We've talked about the different tabs that should be there. We've talked about calendar items and menu items. So we've really kind of got to nitty gritty on websites. So that's been our main focus for the last couple meetings. Our next plan is to, our next task really is to look at a communications survey. So we are tasked before our next meeting to, Shannon is going to share a Google form with us that has some of survey questions. And we're going to try to limit it to, between 10 and 20 questions to send out to the community. So our goal is to bring that to this board, the survey, a draft to this board for July. To just kind of, you know, look over and hopefully have most of those questions solidified so that we can send them out to ask questions about what, what do you want to use? What kind of communications could, would be useful to you in general? And then our third task, which is bigger picture, is coming up with a district-wide communications plan that would be, and we have some samples that Chris has brought for us to look at and maybe use as a model. So we're, you know, the, the communications plan would be bigger than the website issue. It would have more process in it and, and those kinds of things. So, so we have, you know, websites first and foremost, getting that spread away by July, and then survey, and then overarching plan. And, you know, obviously with various drafts of that to bring to this board, the whole board as well. So those are kind of our three focus areas for the summer.
Sounds good. So when we come in July, the website should, changes should have been made so we could see them prior to the Corey Valley July meeting?
There, it's a redoing of the menu items and a reorganization of all the material in those menu items, so that people can kind of get at it easier.
Okay, all right, that'll be great.
And I think one other thing we want to do is, from a procedural standpoint, just to clarify how information gets onto the website in each of our schools, so that there is a sense of equity that, you know, as you look at, you know, schools, that one's, one school's website doesn't look a lot different than others. So, so we're working on that.
Great, that sounds good. And then when you talk about the survey for the community, are we talking just about education community? Are we talking about the community as a whole?
I think we're focused more on sort of parents and students, and mostly parents, but, you know, some students as well, but also for, you know, staff and teachers who also need to use the website. So, you know, we want, we, we have lots of audiences. We want our websites to be attractive to prospective students, but we want it to be useful for our parents where they can find everything from this board's meetings, minutes to, or agendas to, you know, their students' individual information from Infinite Campus and have those in registration. You know, if you have a new student coming in and you need to register that student, make sure the links work and, you know, know what's, when softball's going to be canceled because there's a storm coming or whatever, you know. So all of that nitty gritty stuff. And some, you know, staff within buildings are able to do that stuff pretty quickly. And some, and some, we don't have, some buildings don't have that process. So like Chris said, we're, we're working on sort of defining what those processes to get updated information and photos to where they need to be so that that information is up really quickly. And then also include some social media links for, you know, other kinds of, you know, if a, if a principal is at a game or something and they post something on Facebook, it will be linked to, also to the website, so you can see that, or vice versa. If you link it to the website, it'll, you know, they'll be able to see across those different platforms. So, yeah, there's a lot of big picture, but, but right now we're really focused on streamlining websites, as Greg said, to, to really get the information tabs, you know, sorted out so that it's consistent and clear where you can find the information when you need it.
No, I think that sounds great. And I certainly appreciate your time on setting on another committee and devoting time to this, because it, it really is an important piece to, to us being successful, to having a clear access to communication and information. So, thank you.
Shannon and Greg get a lot of the credit because they're, they're working on it, so.
Great, we appreciate that.
Well, we know where all the people are out there. We know how many people are coming to the websites. We know the different users, what they do. Some people just read the emails, some follow the calendar, all the social media. They have it on their phone. We just want to know like how we're reaching everybody and how we can improve it. I mean, there's a, there is a problem getting content out from the schools. And we're going to try to segue Shannon into being our like court reporter and going out there and finding all the stories and making sure they make it to the website. Because the communications we're finding is a lot of interbuilding communications are not, you know, that there's breakages in there. And there's a lot of things in the community that people want us to do that we are currently not doing, which is like this constant stream of information. People are really used to it.
Right.
And so I think coming out of this committee, we're going to find that we can make all these changes and get the info that everybody needs.
Sounds good. Sounds very positive. Thank you. Future meeting dates, the next meeting is July 19th. The one piece we'd like to discuss about this when we meet in July, we put out a meeting calendar that calendar has where we rotate from school to school. At this point, I'd like to remove that and make central office our meeting spot. That, and we can put out a new calendar for dates going July 1st through March, but that this would be our permanent meeting spot for Corey Valley. Are there any objections to that?
Do you want a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Done.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom. That central office will be our permanent meeting location for in-person. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We have F4 educational record policy in our packet, and this is the second read. Were there any questions, comments on the, on the policy? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the policy. It's hard to get a motion tonight without Nate and Seth here.
Sorry, Kristen Ross, so moved. I'm writing as I, as I listen, so sorry.
Second.
Kristen Whitman, I can second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any other future agenda items for July that the board would like to see on the agenda? And if something comes to you, you can email Chris- And if something comes to you, you can email Kristen or Christine because she'll gather them also prior to us meeting to put the agenda together.
Yeah, I might have just a quick thing, but I haven't heard, just regarding the Slate Valley Trail update, but I haven't heard the final thing yet, so.
Sure.
I will hopefully hear that soon.
You can always just email Christine. She's great about just grabbing information and putting it together for us, so. If there's nothing else, we do need to move into executive session for negotiations. So I would take a motion to move in at 7:16 and we'll give everyone a couple minutes here to clean up.